Hi, I'm Jeremy Frostby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're the hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every day, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can view all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues that affect you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
We went to the Fitchburg Common Council meeting for January 28, 2025. The first thing is to call to the order to the meeting at 7:34. Please stand up for the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of America and to this level of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Aratafrata.
Here.
Donald Dancer Jr.'s absent with excused. Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Herbst is absent with excuse. Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
I'm here, but I will be taking the meeting by Zoom after the proclamation. So I just wanted to let everybody know.
Alder Vafadari.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So next, we move to item four, public appearances for non-agenda items and new appointments. And we have Debbie Haid for a non-agenda item. Please come to the microphone. You have three minutes.
First, let me apologize for getting heated last night. That was uncalled for, and I can assure you it won't happen again. So I want to address, again, the TMDL discussion. I want to make sure that everybody gets what's going on. So 18% over the quota in the One Creek, Nine Springs. No, excuse me, 21% over. And the modeling, which the modeling cost $1 million, it's worth it, and it's well done, no doubt about it. But just sort of, you're on the scale of things. Okay, now to take it, so you have to get to zero. Now, this is just for Nine Springs Creek. You have to get from 21% over to zero. So 3% from going 21 to 18, presumably that's the easy 3%, 5 million. Okay? So 21 divided by 3 is 7. That's $35 million of accrued liability that the city has. So we knew in 2011, when the TMDL came out, there wasn't a accrued liability, but didn't know what the amount was. 2013, I think, was the adaptive management. So at that point, so at the point at which you have TMDL plus waters that are over the limit, say for phosphorus, the rules change. You can build anything you want with 80% total solids, et cetera, et cetera, the normal stormwater ponds, when things are good and clean. Because they tried, initially, they tried with the Clean Water Act to meet everything, and they said, nope, doesn't work. We're going to assume it's good, and we're going to go on engineering calculations. But when your things are bad and you've got things to do that cost money, the rules change. You can require cleaner installation and building of stormwater facilities. And we're not doing that kind of thing. We're basically just saying to the developers, go for the minimum, and then it gets turned over to the city, and the city is then bound by the MS4 discharge permit. The city's on the hook for everything within the watershed. And the thing that I'm immediately most concerned about is the fact that we've got tremendous building going on. We're building centralized facilities. They're all giant, giant wet ponds, which are shown to be very poor at actual performance of cleaning the water. So you heard Ben talk about Swan Creek. Well, the model looks good. Data doesn't look good. Why doesn't it look good? Oh, because we built the ponds in the stream. And what happens is when you put, stack up two, three, you get the serialization effect where you get build pulse, build pulse, and it pushes it right out. And then we have the work at McKee Farms to get the water to move faster. Wait a minute, timeout. If the water moves faster in, it goes through the ponds faster out the other end. So the net result of that is almost certainly an increased discharge of total phosphorus out of there.
Dave, your time is up. So Dave, I want to, I appreciate that you recognize that your behavior last night was not okay. I think you need an apology to our Public Works Director, Tim Walker, and to the Public Works Committee. And the next time that you behave like that, you will not come, I will not allow you in any other meeting. Okay, so next, we are moving to mayor proclamation. So can we start with that?
Yes. Recognizing the third Monday in January as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
Whereas January 15, 2025, marks the 96th anniversary of the birth of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And...
Whereas Dr. King was a leading figure of the civil rights movement, whose nonviolence activism brought about monumental progress in racial equity and justice, and led to the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Voting Rights Act of 1965. Tragically, Dr. King was assassinated on April 4, 1968, but his legacy continues to this day, and...
Whereas nearly 60 years later, Dr. King's dream still resonates, inspiring us to navigate, confront, and address the ongoing impacts of structural racism, both locally and nationally, and...
Whereas remembering and celebrating Dr. King and his achievements encourages us to reflect on the importance of individuals speaking up against injustice and providing a voice for underrepresented and underprivileged communities. Dr. King famously said, darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that, and...
Whereas Martin Luther King Jr. Day is a federal holiday designated as a national day of service to encourage Americans to take a day on, not a day off, and volunteer with other community members to enact meaningful change.
Now, therefore, a bit irresolved that I, Julio Aratafrata, Mayor, along with the Fitchburg Common Council members, do hereby proclaim the third Monday of January of 2025 as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Fitchburg, and encourage all residents to learn more about the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and participate in community service projects to honor his legacy. It's proclaimed to this 28th of January 2025. So I also want to thank Alder Donald Dantzler. He was the one who put together the proclamation. He's not be able to be with us today, but this is, I think this is the first time that the city of Fitchburg is doing that, this proclamation. So I think, I am glad that he brought this proclamation to us. So we're going to take a picture now. When? Oh, when you were mayor. Okay. No, when, I don't remember during my tenure, so...
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Administrative report.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to start off my administrator's report by indicating that city staff is monitoring and evaluating the executive orders that are issued at the federal government level, including those on immigration and federal grants. As we know, there is much to be learned at this point in time as to what the orders are meaning. We are aware that in particular with the federal grant order, there has been an injunction filed this afternoon. But I did want to assure the common council and the community that city staff, and I know you all are as well, are monitoring the situation. Other items in the report. I wanted to mention that the library is currently working with the River Food Pantry to create a small space within the library where folks will be able to access food, non-perishable food. February 4 through the 14th will begin in-person absentee balloting, or in-person absentee voting for the February 18 primary. The in-person absentee voting hours are regular city hall business hours. The primary absentee ballots have been mailed, so anyone who has requested a ballot to be mailed to those, to them, the mail, the ballots have been mailed. Easy for me to say these things tonight for some reason. The fire department, the chief application process closes this Sunday. Obviously, the Police and Fire Commission is coordinating that hiring process, but I wanted to provide an update where we currently sit in the process. City has collected approximately $106 million to date in regards to property tax bill collections. Again, I want to mention that that is not all city tax collections. Only about 1/3 of that, actually, it's slightly under 1/3 of that stays with the city, and the bulk of it is sent to the other taxing jurisdictions. Folks can continue to pay their property taxes here at City Hall through the end of the month in person. I also want to report that as a result of the 2023 audit, the city and its, specifically its finance department, was recognized again by the Government Finance Officers Association and received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. That marks the ninth straight year that the city and its finance department have earned that recognition. And then finally, we are having the first-ever employee recognition ceremony tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM here in the common council chambers. This event has been coordinated by Sarah Olson, our Human Resources Director, and four employees will be recognized by Mayor Aratafrata and other city staff tomorrow night. Those four employees are Joyce Frye, Amy Jordan, Misty Dodge, and Scott Yarborough. So congratulations to all those who are being recognized tomorrow evening. Any questions?
Yeah. The mayor and I are also going to be participating in a, yeah, discussion tomorrow afternoon with the Dane County Cities and Villages Association. They have each of the four municipalities who had a referendum on the most recent November ballot discussing their particular referendum and any reflections that are available so that others who might be considering referendum can utilize the experiences of the four municipalities who most recently had referendum as they chart their own course regarding their referendum. So that'll be tomorrow at noon with the DCCBA. Any questions?
Any question, comments? Nope? Okay. Thank you. So next to mayor's report, so I want to say thank you to, you know, the police department that is, they are monitoring all the misinformation about ICE in Fitchburg. So they are, you know, they are, during the weekend, there were a couple of, you know, false reports. And that one is creating fear and anxiety in our community, and, you know, it's awful. So, and, you know, it's a lot of distraction. We should be focused on other things, but... Today, we had a meeting, an update with the police facility, and it seems like everything is coming on budget. And the idea is to have the bidding by out July, something like that. And then council, I think by August, council, we need to approve the bills and the bidding. And then the idea is to start construction in the fall. So this process is coming along, and, you know, I'm glad that we are on budget with the project. We are also continuing working with the union contract. The union contract with the fire department is going to mediation. I don't remember, is February or March?
April.
April? Oh, April, okay. And the police department is coming soon for final, you know, we hope so.
We have a follow-up meeting next week.
Next week, yes. So the other thing I am doing is attending some of the commission and committees, presenting what are, you know, my priorities, that is, I think, our council priority. I shared with you last night the priorities. So you have other priorities in your district. Please reach out, because we are going to start soon working on the CIP for next year, and it will be a good idea for me to have an understanding. If you're planning to bring new project to the CIP for your district, then we start the conversation sooner. What else? I was, I attended last week as a guest of the governor, the state of the state, and it was a very good experience. It was my first time, so thank you, Governor Evers, for the invitation. What else? There are a couple of events. The Fitchburg Business After Hour is February 6, Delta Beer. And also, there is going to be, the chamber of, the Fitchburg Chamber of Commerce is putting together the forum for all the candidates running in April. So that one is going to be a good, you know, event to participate and be, to have an idea what are the candidates are running for and their position, and... What else? That's it. I don't have anything else. So any question for me, comment? Oh, I sent you a video last night, too, about housing. Please watch it. It's pretty good and explained, and this is going to help you also to explain what we are trying to do here in the city of Fitchburg to your, you know, the resident or neighbors. It's a very good video. That's it. Okay. So next, we move to commission and committee's report. We are going to start with plan commission.
Let me start with the resolutions. I'll move approval of resolution R. 3125. Request by Sean O'Brien, agent for Green Tech Land Company LLC, to obtain certified survey map for approval to create four parcels, including two buildable lots from one existing outlot in Nine Springs on property located off Haid Farm Road.
Second.
Plan discussion did approve, and this is a, an exist, north side of Haid Farm Road, east of the roundabout. Two buildable lots will be created, as it says in the, in the description. This is smart code, so after this approval, the rest of it will go through staff. There are two buildings in this project, 18-unit building with underground parking and a six-unit building with individual garages.
Okay, so I have Debbie Haid want to speak on this issue and this resolution.
So in a nutshell, the way that 24-2B5 is written, it's basically an open-end specification of the DNR rules that are qualified. And I think it was well-written and well-intentioned, and shows that council, when they passed it, were thinking ahead and said, what we want is to want maximal protection. So let's specify it so that if things change, or if we have a misunderstanding, or we're missing something, that we can quickly and easily include that extra protection for wetlands and floodplains. And there's absolutely no question that NR 103 fits in that category. It's absolutely a rule of the DNR. NR is the administrative rules passed by the DNR, and it certainly relates to wetlands. And in a lot of ways, it's the best case because it's a specification that is used to qualify other activities. And what other activities are there? Well, so the big issue is the permitting. So in addition to the permits that are given out by the city, you get a permit from the DNR. And the way it works is you get the one of two flavors. You get a general permit, which means it's self-certification, or you get an individual permit, which means there are hearings, and et cetera. And now, the NR 103 is a highly protective standard, implements precautionary principle. The applicant is required to prove to a standard of beyond, to a reasonable certain, reasonable assurance, that there will not be significant adverse impacts to wetlands. And it's the burden of proof is on the applicant to show that. So it's completely flipped. It's extremely highly protective. And so the general permit, which is the, you self-certify, says specifically, hey, if you impact the wetland, you put water in, you cut water off, you get pollutants, whatever it is, you cannot get this wetland, get this permit. Well, the DNR says, we don't have enough people. So we can't check, we just let it go. They have never flagged, ever, one, that's what they told me. So I wanted to say, so I've been saying, I can stop these things, at least for a while. Here's the letter from the DNR over at the Hartong Farms, December of '23, contested case awarded to me. And I decided not to pursue it because I spoke with Deanna. She recognized that the neighborhood plan had the requirement for compliance with McGaw Park requirements from the amendment to the urban service area, and she got it in at Hartong Brothers, played ball, and got it, and agreed that they would for the rest of the project. So I say, and they're setting their red bull doorsers? Okay, they're playing in good faith. But the problem is that nobody else is. And we've got wetlands all on creeks, and you've got the wetlands down at the Wabi Saw Wetlands, here the...
Dave, your three minutes are up.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any question, comments? Bill?
Yeah, I got a couple. The staff memo says that this is currently T4, but it complies with T5?
Deanna is online, yeah.
I apologize for that. There was a bit of a mix-up on staff. This, under the Article 3, it's actually T5, and so the, it does comply with T5 as it should, because this property is zoned T5.
Okay. And it says mixed use, but all I heard of was housing here. Is there, is there commercial, retail, something that makes it truly mixed use?
There is not in this project.
Any other question, comments? Do you want to add anything else, Deanna?
No, I'm just here for any questions.
Okay. All those in favor of resolution R. 3125, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move approval of resolution R. 3225. Request by Peter Osman, agent for John D. Gale Living Trust, to approve a certified survey map to divide one existing lot into two lots on property associated with 5693 Wilshire Drive.
Second.
Did plan commission approve?
Plan commission did approve. So this is a, it's going to be two properties with a zero lot line. This is a duplex that existed for 30 years. It's a, an owner that used to rent the other side of his duplex and no longer wants to be a landlord. So he is doing this so that it can be a separate unit and sold as an individual home. There has to be a maintenance agreement and the other requirements that are required of any zero lot line home, and the home does meet all of those requirements. It's kind of unusual to retroactively create a zero lot line home, but this one meets all the requirements, and it's an opportunity for a homeownership, kind of unique situation. So, and it's being driven by the individual wanting to sell that second property.
Okay. Any question, comments about this? This one is pretty easy. Okay. All those in favor of resolution R. 3225, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I'll move approval of 2025-001. Request by Edward J. Cody to rezone property from AX Exclusive Agriculture to RR Rural Residential to allow for rural residents located off Borchert Road.
Second.
Did plan commission approve?
Plan did approve.
Did Ag and Rural Affairs Committee approve?
They did.
They did? Okay.
So this was reviewed and approved as a minor comp plan amendment recently. This is the next step, which is the rezone. The owners can sell or build a residence, and it's definitely in line with the, with the spirit of, of what the comp plan wants to do, so...
Any question, comments? Jay?
Deanna, do we know if they're going to be, would they potentially be able to subdivide this lot in the future, since it is such a large lot?
That's a good question. Potentially, yes. The minimum lot size for suit, as long as it's an acre, unseptic, so potentially, yes. Potentially into two, there's not any plans to do that at this point.
Okay.
Any other question? Bill?
Just point out that this was miszoned for the last 60 years or something. This had been zoned exclusive agriculture when it should have been rural residential from the beginning. So the owner has been getting quite a discount on property taxes. This is, this land is valued at $9,400. The neighboring parcels are $7,600 and $100,000.
Whoa. Good to know. Okay.
Yeah, regardless of the zoning, though, they, if they were actually using it for agriculture, I think they could still get an ag use assessment on it, even if it's, even if it was zoned rural residential.
Wow, this isn't a part of the discussion, guys, so... Okay, any other comments, question? All those in favor of ordinance 25-0-01, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
And a couple more things from plan commission, if that's okay. We did an ADR for the Noble Night Games. They are expanding to add a 19,000-square-foot warehouse. We also did the ADR for the Jamestown Chase Bank, which is at the corner of Fitchrhona and McKee Road. We did the ADR for the Jamestown McDonald's, which is right next to that Chase Bank. We postponed the Chick-fil-A ADR for that same area. And the other one is, has yet to come forward for that, for those four lots that front McKee. We discussed the Dark Side Guy ordinance, and then Deanna put together a department report about what the plan commission is, oh, sorry, what the planning department has completed over the course of the year. Pretty incredible. They've had the draft sustainability plan complete, working on assigning action items before we bring it for final approval for the council. The neighborhood plans, the consultants are working on draft plans, and there's obviously some more concerns that have to be met, more steering committee meetings, but it's getting closer there. Plan reviewed 66 applications and 41 agenda items. They processed, the staff processed over 540 applications or agenda items, which is not the most in the year, but it's pretty high up for the number in a year. They also finalized the Parks and Open Space Plan, the teen center study, 10 minor comp plan amendments, updated the Business Highway Zoning Ordinance, and updated the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative Plan. So very impressive, so good job, Deanna and staff. It's pretty incredible. And then the 2025 plans for the department would be NRFP for the comp plan, zoning ordinance update, rezone agricultural parcels and code updates to maintain farmland preservation certification with the state, potential minor zoning changes, a strategic plan for the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative, complete the bike and ped plan, and complete the neighborhood plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanna, I wonder, do you mention plan commission the next...
Plan reviewed 66 applications and 41 agenda items. They processed, the staff processed over 540 applications or agenda items, which is not the most in the year, but it's pretty high up for the number in a year. They also finalized the Parks and Open Space Plan, the Teen Center Study, 10 minor comp plan amendments, updated the Business Highway Zoning Ordinance, and updated the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative Plan. So, very impressive. So, good job, Deanna and staff, it's pretty incredible. And then the 2025 plans for the department would be NRFP for the comp plan, zoning ordinance update, rezone agricultural parcels and code updates to maintain farmland preservation certification with the state, potential minor zoning changes, a strategic plan for the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative, complete the bike and ped plan, and complete the neighborhood plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanna, one of, do you mention Plan Commission the next listening session for the neighborhood plan? Do you know when?
Don't have those, the dates scheduled. We don't have the dates finalized at this point, but as soon as we do, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next we move to the Board of Public Works.
I'll move approval on resolution R-22924, accepting public sidewalk easements and the fourth addition to terravessa.
Second.
Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Board of Public Works approved.
Did Plan Commission approve?
Plan approved.
Thank you. What is this?
Sidewalk was installed in the wrong location on both sides of Swallow Road and at the northeast corner of Lacy and Romayne, approximately six inches further back from the curb than was designed. So to keep the sidewalks in their constructed locations, we have obtained easements for future maintenance of the sidewalks. There are seven property owners, several have five-plus buildable lots. This was discovered after reviewed the as-built drawings. The easements will be recorded in the home, the ultimate home buyers documentation, and city staff time on this, as well as the cost to replat, is not borne by the city.
So we're going to charge back?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay. Any question, comment? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-229-24, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval of resolution R-22524, accepting subdivision improvements for Phase 1 in the plat of the fourth addition to terravessa.
Second.
Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Yes, we did.
Okay. What is this?
So this is a standard subdivision improvement approval. Our city engineer has gone out and inspected it, and, you know, this is subsequent to the, to the sidewalk amendment that we just talked about, or resolution. And we have received signed copies of the easement agreements, and so this resolution can move forward.
Thank you. Any question, comments? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-225-24, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. Next one.
I'll move to postpone to date uncertain, resolution R-22824, accepting subdivision improvements in the Inspiration at Swan Creek CSM.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of postponing this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries.
Why are we postponing this?
The developer is waiting on MG&E to install the utilities, and that will happen at some point this spring.
Okay, next one.
I will move approval of resolution R-0425, amending the 2025 water utility budget for an LTE plumber for large meter replacements.
Second.
Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Yes.
Finance approved.
Thank you. What is this?
Throughout the city, we are replacing one and a half and two-inch water meters. The cost of the, of the replacement is borne by the utility rather than the property owner, and must be done by a master plumber. So the ask here is for 300 hours of time in 2025 to employ the same plumber who has already done about 225 of these replacements for us last year.
Okay. Any question, comment? No? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-04-25, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval of resolution R-0524, awarding the contract for construction of South Sine Road reconstruction, Phase 2.
Second.
Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Yes.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
The City Council approved resolution R-14921, which was the typical section from East Cheryl Parkway north to West Clayton Road. So that's what we're talking about reconstructing here. Five bids were received, and Parisi was the low bidder and found to be in compliance with the requirements. The CIP includes sufficient funding for the construction, but we do need a budget amendment in order to cover the cost of water and stormwater improvements. There are funds left over from Lacy Road that came in under budget, and the Schuman Stormwater Project has been reviewed and will not require all of the funds that have been allocated. So, we're talking about shifting a few dollars there as well, more than a few dollars. Tim, this is a pretty big item. You want to probably add something to it?
Just that the budget amendment will require a two-thirds vote. As Alder Jetser was mentioning, it's for the, the water and the stormwater, and the amount for the waters coming from the Lacy Road reconstruction project in the amount of $136,165. So the Lacy Road construction, the cost for the water portion were less than anticipated, so we, we had some money available to move from that project. And then the Schuman Drive has changed, the scope of the project has changed. We don't have to do as much improvement along Schuman Drive as we originally anticipated. So therefore, there's some available funding to redirect towards the South Sine Road reconstruction project.
I just want to clarify, a simple majority is required in this particular case because the amendment does not alter total revenue or expenditures in any particular funds. So typically, budget amendments will require two-thirds unless they don't alter total revenue or expenditures, so just want to clarify that.
Okay, any question, comments?
I have a quick question. Tim, what is the Schuman Drive project that you're referring to?
I have Ben here, he could probably explain a little bit more detail on that project.
Yeah, certainly. So, the Schuman Drive project initially involved upsizing storm sewer across most of the length of Schuman Drive. The reason that we were considering that project is there was a discharge into the Seminole Glen wooded kettle. However, there, there's a valve that can actually be turned on and off to prevent the discharge, so that valve is off and will likely remain off for the foreseeable future. So with that in mind, we still have to accommodate that additional flow. It appears, based on observations, that the existing storm sewer along Schuman Drive doesn't quite have the capacity to take that additional flow. So, we do have a storm model, water model for the area, so rather than upsizing the whole length, it looks like we'll get some pretty good results with a lot less of a, I guess, I would say, intrusive project by just kind of upsizing one of the pinch points at the very downstream bend. And it would still allow us enough funding to put in essentially an overflow pipe into the kettle, so, you know, there, there wouldn't be the threat of private property flooding by, by providing relief into the storm, the storm sewer along Schuman Drive.
Awesome.
And that's kind of a summary of, of the project. So basically, it, it just reduced in scope as we found that upsizing the entire length doesn't necessarily have to be completed right now.
Awesome. Thank you for speaking to that, because I know neighbors along that stretch have been concerned about that, so I appreciate you taking time to just articulate how the, the issue will still be solved and mitigated while we get to save some money at the same time as, at least as what was previously thought. So, thank you.
Okay, any other question, comments? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-05-25, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. So, next, next one.
I'll move approval of resolution R-0625, awarding the contract for engineering services for oversight of South Sine Road reconstruction, Phase 2.
Second.
Okay, Dave, do you want to speak on this one, too? They?
I have a contract with the board.
No? So that one is eight, B6, so you, okay.
And finance approved.
Board of Public Works approved.
Okay, what is this?
So Phase 2 of Sine Road reconstruction will need engineering services for the construction oversight. It's going to be, it'll, the work will consist of construction management, field inspection, material sampling and testing. Public Works Department put out proposal, or RFP and proposals were received. Staff reached out to three of the firms that provide construction oversight to get more detailed proposals. And KL Engineering declined to provide a proposal due to workload. Meaden Hunt's proposal is attached in the, in the packet, and Rukert Milkie's proposal is also attached. Public Works selected Rukert Milkie based on their project approach, knowledge of Fitchburg, and success on their job on the Lacy Road project, which was completed by RA Smith, but a large portion of the project team has since moved to Rukert Milkie, and will be providing over, and was selected to provide oversight on Sine Road, Phase 2.
Okay, any question, comments? No? Okay. All those in favor of resolution R-06-25, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval of resolution R-0725, authorizing payments to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for South Sine Road reconstruction, Phase 3.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
So Phase 3 of the South Sine Road reconstruction is from West Clayton Road up through and including the Sine McCoy intersection. And the city of Fitchburg, in coordination with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, is, is, we're, we're working together, and bids for the construction of the project were opened by WISDOT back in August. Nine bids were received. Rock Road Companies was the low bidder at $2.56 million. The overall cost of the construction and project oversight is going to total to about $3.2 million, which includes a 10% contingency. A state municipal agreement to receive federal funding in the amount of $1.7 million for this project was signed by resolution R-122. The Phase 3 project is being funded by multiple sources, including borrowing, stormwater fund, federal transportation funds. The city's portion of the project is going to be about $1.6 million, including contingency, with the remainder to be funded by the federal funding.
We'll see.
We'll see. Yes.
I will add, city staff did reach out to their contact at the Wisconsin Department of Transportation in regards to the federal funding for this particular project, and the response that we were provided indicated that since this project has been bid and awarded at the state level, that the funding is obligated, and the funding is there. That's the response we got.
Yeah, okay, Jay?
Tim, I know that you and I talked about this a couple of times last year, because my, my hope was that we'd be able to start construction in November, but apparently, there was a holdup with, was it the funding, or was it the land acquisition, or what was, can you, can you explain that to people?
Yeah, there, there was some issues going on with the, the land acquisition, kind of on the north end of the, the project, or along that Capital City Trail. We did get the project bid out this summer. Bids came in in August. However, you know, when we reached out to the contractors, you know, they, they couldn't start based on their workload in winter, so, you know, spring was the soonest that they could start.
I have another question. So Phase 2 and Phase 3 are going to be, you know, we are going to work on those on the same time? Or we, we start with Phase 2, and then when Phase 2 is done, we start with 3? How is this process?
Both, but both phases will be going on at the same time. And work will be completed by two different contractors. You know, our, what we're envisioning is weekly meetings will be had, and both contractors and their representatives would attend that weekly meeting at the same time, you know, because there will be coordination between the two phases that will need to be had. So, you know, we'll have WISDOT there, we'll have their consultant doing the construction admin, their contractor, and then we'll have our contractor, Parisi, and then our engineering consultant, Rukert Milkie, all in one meeting to discuss kind of the, the weekly issues and anything that comes up.
And how long is going to be this reconstruction? It's going to take a year, a couple of months?
We're hoping to have it complete prior to winter of this year.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, November-ish, 2025.
Okay. Nicole, and then you, okay? Nicole?
I do maybe have a kind of difficult question. I don't know if this is maybe for our city attorney. But, in all seriousness, looking at this total budget of $2.7 million, 1.7 is committed by the federal government, which, like, just based on today, doesn't feel like the most stable funding source that there has ever been. And so, if, if those funds do not come through, the majority of this price tag, we can, we do not have plans to pay for as a city. But that being said, we also can't legislate or not make decisions based on what may or may not happen at top levels of government and funding that may or may not be legally or illegally pulled. So I guess my question overall is, what, what are the legal recourses of things? Like, while I, I very much appreciate that the state is telling us that there was just an announcement of millions of federal workers being offered payouts to leave their jobs, and being offered eight months of pay, when no one actually knows if that's legal or within the purview of the President of the United States. So my question is, are we going to be screwed holding a big bill that we're then going to have to force onto the Fitchburg taxpayer? And what are legal protections that we can put to protect our city and our taxpayers, if anything? I know I'm asking a kind of impossible question.
I will acknowledge that you have asked a nearly impossible question. And I think at this point in time, we need to make decisions on the best available information that we have in order to keep projects on schedule. Obviously, a significant amount of engineering work and design in this project has already been bid and awarded by the State Department of Transportation, at least as we're talking about Phase 3, and actually, you just accepted Phase 2 as well. So we are moving full steam ahead. Again, we're monitoring the situation. We don't know exactly what these orders mean at this point in time. And again, we did get assurance on the 1.7 million from the state, that they feel confident that that money is there. So, again, we'll monitor the situation if and when there are any adverse impacts related to this project. We would certainly look at what our options are available to, to pursue recourse on that.
So, you know, if the worst-case scenario happened, you know, maybe we are going to see that budget amendment here coming.
Are there reasonable, just as a quick follow-up, I would love to understand if there are reasonable checkpoints within these phases that are like, the answer might be no, but like, okay, the plan is done, now we're going to start digging in the ground? Or, you know, just some, just some areas where we could say, okay, we're really committing to this, this is a new chunk of funds that we're now putting forward? Just kind of thinking out loud, but.
So this is, this is actually ready to move forward with construction to begin. Tim, I'm just going to defer to you real quick. I assume that if there's a, a potential jump-off point, it would be just, you know, before the construction actually begins, and of course, we'd And of course, we'd need to check contracts and those sorts of things to see if there is, is even a jump off point at that, at that juncture. But again, I think, I think it's important to be aware of this and these questions are all valid questions. Again, they are difficult to answer unfortunately right now due to the uncertainty, but we can assure you that we'll be working not only with DOT on Phase Three of the project, but also with our own internal staff and crew on Phase Two to continue to monitor what's happening. And if there are appropriate actions that need to be taken to mitigate our exposure, we will certainly as staff bring those forward. Yep.
Jay?
Yeah, two things, Tim, and maybe just to expand on what you just said. The first one is, I think by, by virtue of the action we've taken tonight, we've awarded contracts. So we are probably pretty much obligated to pay those contracts. I don't, I, I haven't, I'm not aware of a way for us to just bail on it. I'd have to go read the fine print, but maybe there's some big penalty if we bail on it. But I think, I think awarding the contracts means we've awarded the contract and we've said we're going to pay for these projects. Is that?
That's how our contracts work.
I think that's generally how they work for other construction projects we've had. Tim, the other question that has come up in some discussions with the neighborhood, I know that when we did the, when we did the Phase One, we basically prevented any traffic from using that section of the road until it was completed. And I know in a previous conversation with you, we had talked about that. So is that the plan for Phases Two and Three to just shut the road down until they're done? And how are we, what are we going to do to communicate with the neighborhood about what alternate routes might be and that kind of thing?
Yeah, as of, right now, the plan is to shut down the road and go to construction and let the contractor kind of have at that workspace. We find that the, the most efficient when they can do their work without having to deal with, with traffic. You know, once we award these contracts, we'll, we'll schedule a pre-construction meeting with the contractors. And once we have a better idea on their schedule, we'll be putting out notifications, you know, definitely throughout the neighborhood. We've been in contact already with the Madison Metro and the school district for bus routes to, to the school during the design process. We've also been in contact with Kelly Moss, the business to the east of Fire Station Number Three, because they, you know, operate their business with racing and also, you know, repairing vehicles throughout the week. So, you know, they are aware of the project and we've made accommodations for the, all those items already with the design. So we'll be, once we have a better idea on the schedule, notifications will be starting to come out regarding the schedule for construction.
Do we have any rough idea when it's going to start?
Spring.
As of now, no. But yeah, as soon as the weather turns nice enough where they can get out there, you know, at, at the beginning of a project, you'll kind of see the erosion control go up and some demo work happen. So I would suspect that, that could probably start, you know, in, in March at some point.
I, I have another question because the fire station is there, you know, so I imagine that the fire truck, they will be able to, you know, exit if they need to, isn't it? And EMS, too, you know, because they are critical services, you know what I mean? So.
Absolutely. And the, the fire station was also part of the design process throughout the design and we sat down with them. And there are stipulations within the contract for the, both contractors, the, for both Phase Two and Phase Three to accommodate fire engine and ambulance throughout construction. So they're to maintain a, I believe it's a 12-foot wide travel lane regardless of what's going on for those emergency vehicles to get to the response.
Okay. Good to know. Any other question, comment? So what is going to be the alternative route for neighbors to ask, you know?
I, I, with, there is a, a traffic control. I, I can email that plan to council after the meeting and you guys can take a look at it.
Yeah, in case the neighbors are asking question, especially for District Three elders. Okay, thank you. Okay, so all those in favor of resolution R dash zero seven dash twenty, dash twenty five say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval on resolution R zero eight twenty five, accepting an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Fitchburg and Dane County for paving the Capital City Trail, Trailhead parking lot.
Second.
Okay, the Board of Public Works approved?
Yes.
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you, what is this?
As part of the Sine McCoy intersection reconstruction, the, the Trailhead will have its driveway moved to the intersection. So the trail, the parking lot and the actual trail itself will have, will have to be moved somewhat. And the county and the city decided that we can take advantage of economies of scale here and we can pave that Trailhead parking lot as part of this. So that's what this agreement is for.
Okay, any question, comments? All those in favor of resolution R dash zero eight dash twenty five say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval on resolution R eleven twenty five, approving the 2025 yard waste grinding services.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
Fitchburg Streets collects yard waste at the recycling facility and it's then hauled to a location and held there until there's enough to have a grinder come in. After the material is ground, it's placed in windrows for composting and the city makes that available to residents in the form of both compost and wood chips. And the grinding will, you know, help the material break down faster.
Okay, any question, comments? All those in favor of resolution R dash eleven dash twenty five say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, anything else from Public Works?
Just a couple of updates from the Director's Report. The 2025 street resurfacing, the, the design is being finished and we'll look to advertise that next month. And the Fitchrona Road reconstruction project, we're currently still working on property acquisition. And once that's complete, we can send, send out bids for construction.
I have a question. What about the Wayland Road shoulder project? Do you know about that?
Tim does.
Someone asked me the other day about this and I forgot about this project.
Yeah, so Wayland Road is under design right now. Ross has reached out to, there's, I believe, 13 properties that we need to get a temporary construction easement from. So Ross has been in communication with them. I believe some exhibits were kind of drawn up for each of the properties to kind of, so the property owner can visually see the impact on their property for, during construction. Kind of once we meet with them, you know, we'll finalize the design and go out to bid, hopefully by the end of spring and have that constructed summer, early fall.
Okay, thank you. What about the Fitchrona project? The road reconstruction?
Yeah, Fitchrona Road reconstruction, we're hoping to have bid out this spring and then also construction on summer and fall.
Okay, great. Can you send us to the council, to the council, the, the map with all the roads that you are planning to, you know, what is, the annual?
Resurface.
Resurface. So I want to, yeah, to have an idea which one are in case the neighbors ask those questions they like sometimes. So we know what we, what we can say. Okay, thank you, Tim. Anything else?
Nope.
Nope, okay, thank you. Next, Park Commission, Dave is not here. Library Board?
Nothing to report.
Commission of Aging Well, Donald is not here. Resource Conservation Commission?
We meet next on February, we meet next on February 10th.
Thank you. Transportation and Transit Commission?
We meet next on February 13th.
Thank you. Community and Economic Development Authority, so we have a resolution.
We do. We met last week and we had a rousing discussion of many things. The mayor came and joined us and laid out her priorities for the coming year, which was very helpful for the committee. And we got a bunch of development updates which have, are, you can watch the meeting and get the list because Mike goes through a rather extensive list. But on behalf of the Community and Economic Development Authority, I will move approval of resolution R seventeen twenty five, amending the 2025 Affordable Housing Fund Budget for a housing intern to update and analyze the Fitchburg fee schedule and related policies.
Second.
Did CEDAT approve? Did you approve it in CEDAT?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Finance approved.
We did.
Okay, what is this?
So this is to get a, an intern that will help us determine whether our, our current fee schedule is competitive in the, in the county and makes, hopefully make some recommendations as to changes we can make to it. The, we're hoping, this, this currently is set to be funded out of the housing fund where we have the 9.6 million dollars, I think. However, we are applying for a grant from the Realtors Association, so if we get that grant, it will cover the cost of this and we won't have to use anything from that fund.
May I add something from Finance? Mike shared that if this is approved tonight, they'll probably post the internship tomorrow, hoping to get someone in relatively soon. They expect, it's going to be open to literally anybody, but certainly sharing it with the Luffalet School at UW and could see like a senior in college or a grad student in city planning coming to, and to do something like that.
Okay, any, we need two thirds of vote here, okay? So I, I have to do roll call. Any other question? Comment? No? Okay.
I will add, in the case of two absent elders this evening, two-thirds equates to all six votes needing to be yes.
So you know. Okay, go ahead, Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Jetzer?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
No, I'm just kidding. Aye.
Alder Baffedary?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from CEDAT? Jay?
Nope.
Nope, okay, thank you. Ag and Rural Affairs Committee, Nicole?
I unfortunately was not able to attend in person as our family had a lovely case of the flu last week, but we did discuss the resolution that was brought forward for the rezoning and then other items, but that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission?
Our next meeting is February 5th at 7:30 a.m.
Thank you. EMS?
Nothing to report.
Healthy Neighborhood Committee?
Our next meeting is in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. Housing Advisory Committee?
Our next meeting is on February 10th at 4 p.m.
Thank you. Landmark and Preservation Commission?
I have no report.
Tree Advisory Committee?
No updated reports since the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then we need, I don't know whether this here, because this is not a formal committee, but, okay.
I can postpone it if you want.
Yeah.
I'll move to postpone resolution R 19624 to the February 25th meeting.
February 25th?
Second.
Yeah.
Okay.
February or March?
February 25th at this point. So obviously the consultant is evaluating all the feedback and making the appropriate revisions to the strategic plan. I know the common council would like to see that revised draft a couple of weeks in advance of any action being taken on it. So at this point in time, we'll postpone till February 25th and if necessary, you know, it could be possible to postpone into March if need be, depending upon when that draft arrives. We anticipate that the draft will arrive in February.
I second the motion to postpone.
Okay, all those in favor of postponing resolution R dash 196 dash 24 say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. So next, do we have any report from other commission and committee? No? Okay. So then we move to item nine, is the Standing Committee's report. And we will start with the Finance Committee.
I'll move approval of resolution R 0125, Fire Department 2025 Annual Fitchburg-Verna Analog Tactical System Maintenance.
Second.
Finance Committee approved, and this is an annual payment. It is our maintenance for our communication that is shared with Verona and Epic. Also shared the cost in addition to that, but something we do every year. Anything to add, Chad?
Yes, that is correct. So what happens is the city pays for it and then they invoice Verona and Epic.
So this one was approved in the budget, isn't it?
Yes, it was approved in the budget as far as the funding being available. And now obviously you're approving the actual maintenance agreement.
Okay. Because it's like, well, we had approved and seen that we already approved in the budget, so that one is my comment, but.
Staff would be happy to entertain a conversation on ways to make processes more efficient.
I would love that. Jay?
Yeah, just a question about this, because I don't remember. I know that we, there was, there was a lot of hand wringing about the radio systems many years ago. And I, I don't even know now, do our, do our fire and police radios, can they talk to each other? Do they talk to other municipalities? Can we talk to Madison? Can we talk to Dane County? How does the system, just a brief overview of how the system works right now?
So this system, we can talk to Dane County. We do have, when we're assigned to it, there is a dedicated dispatcher listening to the, to the operations of that. So naturally, we worked with Verona because we're constantly going automatic aid with them as well as going out to Epic. Epic chose to join in on this system so that when we, well, Verona responds and if we need to respond with any automatic aid, that we have that continuous fire ground operations communication. So it was just upgraded. It's working very well. You can definitely tell the upgrade helped out with coverage and we're happy about that, very happy about that. So like I said, this is just annual, an annual maintenance agreement. It did go up a little because warranties are starting to run out. So naturally with that, when it, when, with radio systems, that starts increasing the cost a little. So yes, we are able to, to communicate with the comm center on this. Our area departments, you know, we, we've asked them to put them into their radio zones and their, you know, place channels within their zones that respond into Fitchburg or Verona. But, I mean, there's always the chance too, is that they have patching capabilities up at the 911 center if needed, but that's all done through the, the 911 center up at, at Dane County.
Got you.
Any other question, comment? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R dash zero one twenty five say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next one.
I'm going to move approval of resolution R 1025, amending the 2025 General Fund Budget for LTE Police Staffing.
Second.
The Finance Committee did approve.
Okay, what is this?
This is, this police department is continuing to use salary savings to fund part-time positions to help with things like records, request, typing reports, data entry. These are the same individuals that have been hired in previous years, including some retired employees that came back to help. And so they obviously know the department really well. In addition to this, great work. Anything you want to add, Captain? Anything you want to add, Captain?
Really? Nothing?
Sorry, sorry to steal the...
No? Okay, any question, comment? No? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-10-25, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. We need simply my...
I move approval of Resolution R 1325, approving police squad equipment purchase.
Second.
Finance Committee approved. These are, this is the equipment for two squads that recently arrived. They were ordered last March, I believe, and just arrived. However, it will take about 10 to 15 weeks for this equipment to arrive and then additional time for it to be installed. So we still have quite a long way to go before these squads are out on the streets. This is a full package typical for squads, and I think the two vehicles are slightly different on the outside. Is that correct?
Yes, one of the vehicles will have a light bar on top and the other one, the light bar will be inside of the vehicle.
So, okay, I want to understand, we purchased a car last year, isn't it?
Correct.
Do we have the car? No?
They were just delivered.
Oh, just delivered?
Yep, a few weeks ago.
And now we need to wait another, I don't know how many weeks?
Correct.
But this, did we approve this in the budget too?
We did. Ms. D pointed out in the Finance Committee meeting that there was not adequate funding available in the 2024 budget to fully fund all of the police squad equipment that was needed for these vehicles. So we needed to wait until this budget here kicked in in order to fully fund all of those items.
But if we approve the budget in November, we already can do the pre-approval, so we should have approved this in December. No? Do we have no do a pre-prepare?
I'd have to think about that process.
This is an accounting... Okay, just curious because...
I asked about the same thing. We should try to see if there's any way we can make it more efficient, just given that we know that these delays are coming.
Yeah, because now that we are waiting, you know...
Is there any way that we can make it faster?
Okay, Jay and then Nicole.
Yeah, that just, that just seems absurd that we would have to wait another three months in order to equip these vehicles now that we have them. So I don't, was it a CIP issue or what was, why didn't we have the funding to do this in 2024?
We didn't have all the money.
We had most of the money, but not all of it. And I believe this is coming out of the CIP equipment. Is this coming out of the CIP squad account or has it come out of a separate account through your operating budget? I'd have to double check where that's coming from. Let me see here. That's not it.
Well, it, just while you're looking that up, it seems like rather than have to wait three months after we have the vehicles, we could have done some kind of budget amendment to fix it so that, you know, even if we had to take, I mean, this is $25,000. Surely, we have...
That's the money.
...in excess of $25,000 in fund balance that we could have used because this is a one-time expenditure, right?
So this is coming out of CIP account, 45722199.
Yeah, but we could have transferred something out of fund balance into that account, couldn't we?
I'd want to check with Misty to see if that would have been feasible. I don't know why it wouldn't have been. And I do think that this conversation, in addition to the one that had been had earlier, there are some opportunities to find some efficiencies in these processes. In particular, when you're looking at squad cars or other equipment like this that's purchased off a state contract, I assume, in this case, you're seeing this as, you're seeing this as a council for the third time. And that means that you see, you saw it first last summer for the CIP, then you still had an opportunity to make any adjustments or otherwise approve it when the operating budget is adopted in November. And then, of course, now you're seeing it again for the third time. So this is something that I pointed out when I was in a different role in doing some purchasing, that I don't understand why I need to appear for three different conversations, particularly when we're buying something that has been approved in the budget. It is off of a contract that's been previously negotiated. So I know the mayor has a desire to look at some of these situations as well. And as I stated earlier, staff is certainly happy to have that conversation.
Last night, I sent you my priorities and some policy to discuss, and you read that, it's going to tell you it's coming this and what are the benefits of doing this? We are going to have shorter meetings. We are going to free that the staff.
Oh, that's no fun.
People being here like two or three times, especially now that we are under staff, you know? So that, you know, so we need to, this policy is going to come for discussion eventually this year to...
Yeah.
We need to, you know, be more streamlined with the process. Sorry for the...
Strong support for that, I think, across the council. I'm seeing that.
Okay, anything else from, yeah, oh, Bill?
Well, just one more note on the timing of this. Captain McCarthy explained that even though we ordered these in March, we only get about five days heads up that the cars are going to arrive. And we can't really schedule for the installation of the equipment until we know we're going to have the cars. And so, you know, with the nine-month lead time and they don't tell us more than a week in advance when it's going to show up, that's the point when we can start with, you know, contacting, what's the name of the company? GenCom?
GenCom.
GenCom. And they've got their own lead time of 10 to 15 weeks, apparently.
So that, sorry, I had a question, kind of building off of that. The last time we bought a car, we had to wait for a year, but it was a fully electric Mach-E. Are Ford Explorers in like high demand? Like, why are they taking so long?
They're one of the most standard police vehicles in use across the country, and so there's a limited supply of them.
And there's just like no insight to the pipeline to allow us to try and set up these installations?
Just like everything that slowed down, I think it's still a process of recovering from what's happened over the last five years at this point and slowing down the supply chain. And, you know, we've tried several different strategies, including going to Georgia to purchase from a dealer there. So I'm trying to be creative and get the vehicles that we need.
Okay, Jay?
Yeah, I mean, I get your point, Bill, but I think, I mean, the way I run things in my business is I would rather order the equipment for the vehicle sooner. And if we have to sit on that for six or eight weeks while we're still waiting for the car, that's okay. But a cars, these cars are pretty expensive and to have them just sitting in the lot without being used for months just doesn't make any sense to me. You know, the $25,000 for the lights for two cars, that's, that doesn't, it doesn't bother me to sit on that, but I'm sure these vehicles are in the 70, $80,000 range. And sitting on those for months without having this equipment just, I don't know.
We buy a Namaso?
Yep.
I mean, it seems like you can backtime this. I mean, if we're told it's going to take nine months to get the vehicles, then six months after you order them, order the lights.
Unfortunately, we run into some policies, issues as far as some of the suppliers, that they will not provide us or start that order for the equipment until they have a VIN from the vehicle.
Oh, really?
So those are issues that we run into with both the outfitter that we work with and with the providers. We're dealing with multiple vendors when we're outfitting these cars. And so because of model year changes and designs, if they even change a couple inches in the console, that's an entirely different piece of equipment. So they'd hate to send you a console that is for one vehicle and then Ford switches the design. So we run into a number of obstacles in this and any efficiencies that we can enjoy internally would be of great benefit to us as we're dealing with a number of external obstacles.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of Resolution R-13-25, say aye.
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 And you oppose, the motion carries. Thank you.
I move approval of Resolution R 1425, authorizing legal services in the defense of Franklin Square Condos fiduciary real estate development. Fred, Elon Valley View LLC Excessive Tax Assessment Lawsuit.
Second.
Finance approved. This is actually a retroactive approval. We did approve legal services for this at a certain cost. It ended up costing more than anticipated, so it's coming back to us. We were successful in fighting the lawsuit.
So this one is two thirds?
No.
Okay. So this is where, so we are authorizing this to because they increased the budget or no?
They just ended up spending more than I think we had originally anticipated.
So staff originally estimated that this would be under $25,000 in expenditures, so therefore it would need to come to common council. Unfortunately, through the course of the defense of this assessment case, the cost did slightly exceed $25,000, hence why you're getting it now. And as Elder Gerhart reported, the case has been dismissed on motion by the City of Pittsburgh. So we don't anticipate any additional expenses related to this case.
Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-14-25, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. Thank you.
I move approval of Resolution R 1525, approving 2025 to 2028 Help Desk Software Renewal.
Second.
This was approved by Finance. This is existing software we use. We are doing a multi-year contract for the first time to create savings, which takes it over that $25,000 benchmark, which is why it's coming to council. Previously, we did an annual...
But did we approve it in the budget?
Yes.
So there's a, there's a little bit of an asterisk on this one, though. It was approved for the budget, but we, this is actually a three-year agreement, so it'll cross multiple budgets.
Oh.
So obviously, you haven't approved the 26... So you're approving a three-year agreement is what you're doing right now.
Okay. Okay. Any question?
Can you, oh, sorry. Can you just restate, what departments use this?
So this is used by multiple departments. So it's citywide, it's utilized to report IT-related matters, software, hardware, whatever the case may be. And then also other departments will use it. I believe the police department is still using it if there's a vehicle maintenance request. An officer would fill out a vehicle maintenance request and then that will get routed appropriately. I believe we also do our building maintenance requests through this system as well. So multiple departments are using it for a variety of different tasks.
Good job previous us. This price seems very reasonable.
Okay.
Question?
Bill?
Yeah, is this, is this software used strictly internally or is this also the backend for the city's website, report a problem?
This is strictly internal. The city's report of problem is provided through the website, provider Civic Plus.
Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-15-25, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries.
I move approval of Resolution R 1625, authorizing payment to Axley Brindleton and LLP for outside legal services in 2025.
Second.
Finance approved. This is a pre-approval. We do this typically. It is to pre-approve up to $50,000 of expenses for Axley Brindleton, which helps with our, I believe, our employment, staffing, legal services. And we will, the charges do come through in the finance reports.
This is labor, isn't it?
Yeah, this is our labor.
Labor, yes.
Yep, absolutely. And this is one of those, this actually is an efficient way to handle this. So this covers, I believe, the first $50,000 in potential costs associated with Axley's services. So in lieu of bringing each individual cost to the common council, we do one pre-approval simply at the start of the year, and ideally, we don't exceed that, so we don't need to come back.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of Resolution R-16-25, say aye.
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 And you oppose, the motion carries. Next one.
I move approval of Resolution R 2125, 2025 Payment Service Network PSN Fees.
Second.
Finance approved. This is an annual item. It's our utility billing. It's a tool that people can use if they want to do online payment of utility bills with their credit card. There is a fee to both the consumer and to the stormer utility for using this. Just as an FYI, anyone that pays their Pittsburgh utility bills, you can send a voided check to the city and they will take it directly out of your checking account. No fee, you don't have to think about it. But if you want to use the credit card, you can, you can use the service. So FYI, I just want people to know that that's an option, too.
I do just want to clarify that the utilities offers is free, so the utility is absorbing the cost on this.
Oh, the utility, sorry.
We do, we do have PSN where there, it is split between the city and the user. In this particular case, the city, through its common council resolutions in the past, has had the utilities cover the cost of this particular PSN.
And this is the same company that we have, that they issued last year, so they are improving with the services?
Yes, we did have an issue last year that was resolved. And by and large, yes, we have been satisfied with this company. We've had them for a number of years. And with anything, we'll continue to monitor. And if issues continue or new ones come up, then we'll respond accordingly.
Okay, okay. All those in favor of Resolution R-21-25, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. Next one, we are moving to Personnel Committee. Any update? Who is in Personnel?
That's Donald and myself. We have, we have not met since the last time. Joe, did we meet since the last meeting?
I think so.
Yeah, maybe we did.
No.
No?
You didn't.
Yeah, it might be like, what, two weeks ago?
We did meet about two weeks ago. We did a...
It was right after the last meeting.
Reclassification. I'll pull up the agenda here, so hang on a second.
We did, we did do a reclassification of an engineering position, which we were very, we continue to be very supportive of in terms of retaining our amazing city staff that we have and making sure that they're titled properly and competitively. Chad, maybe you can add if there was anything else.
Yep, we've got the agenda here. The meeting was January 16th. That was the only action item that was taken, was the reclassification of the senior project engineer to principal engineer. And then the other two items were a fire chief recruitment update and an update on the employment, employee engagement survey.
Oh, the employee engagement survey, yeah. It was sent out, yeah. Okay, thank you. Public Safety and Human Services.
We, I just wanted to report that we approved a alcohol license for a new restaurant. Yay! It's going to be the restaurant that's at the top floor of the Wyndham Hill Building. It's going to be called Zaffarano Restaurante, which, well, it's Z-A-F-F-E-R-A-N-O.
What is, it's an Italian name, isn't it?
Well, so she, so the, the woman who owns it was in to our meeting tonight and she says it is going to be an Italian-Indian fusion restaurant.
Okay, I never thought about that.
So she said they're going to have pizzas that might have some Indian flavor to them and so...
When they will open?
They will be opening February 2nd.
Okay, good to know. Okay. So now we move to new business. So we have a direct referral. Who's going to do the direct referral?
I can do it. I move approval of Resolution R 2225, Acceptance of Burn Memorial JAG Violence Reduction Analyst Grant.
Second.
Finance approved.
Public Safety and Human Services? Do you approve?
We approved, yes.
Okay, thank you. What is this?
I'll let you cover this.
Oh, Ned, you're going to explain that?
I was saving my time for this moment. So this is a opportunity for us to bring a new expert to some work that's been going on. Over, just over two years ago, the U.S. Attorney's Office initiated a multi-agency collaboration and it is under the umbrella of reducing gun violence in the area. So it's the Gun Violence Reduction Initiative. Since then, we have been at the forefront of that group and leading our efforts in the county. Late last year, we were approached with the opportunity for this grant to bring an analyst in, which we feel is kind of the missing piece in bridging some data gaps that we have and creating some useful and actionable data that this group can use to address the issue of gun violence and violent crime in Dane County and really tie together some of the work that's being done. And so this is accepting that opportunity to then bring in, engage with a contract analyst to work with this group.
I want to mention that we have online Michael Austin. He's the Wisconsin Department of Justice and Grant Coordinator. And then Chief Morales. So I don't know, Michael, do you want to add anything else?
No, Ned covered it very well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any question, comment? So this one is going to be a subcontractor practically.
Correct.
The money is coming from the federal government, isn't it?
Correct. And Mike is here to represent any, answer any questions. Current guidance, say he provided as of this afternoon, and obviously, we're aware that things are changing, is that we're proceeding forward with this, understanding that this is accepting the, the grant. And then if changes need to be made, we have not entered in any contract with anybody at this point.
Okay, okay, okay. That one was my question.
That was my, like, the contract as written, clearly with construction, we're committing to the bid because there's lots of investment in things. Is this a little more flexible in that if we lose the funding, which hopefully we do not, because this seems like a great initiative, that we can stop the services being provided by the subcontracting company?
Yeah, we, again, we have not entered in any contract with anybody. This is accepting the grant, and as I understand it, and Mike can confirm that, that's where we would, we'd be at where we could make modifications.
Oh, because then you need to do an RFP, isn't it? To select a subcontractor.
There will at least be some process that will need to be done in order to select the contractor.
Thank you for bringing us in that.
Some, I mean, I would estimate probably 30 to 60 days in a best-case scenario from even making a selection that would come forward. So that also buys us some time to see what happens.
Okay, so we need two thirds of the vote.
I just want to just, congratulations on getting the grant. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah. Who worked on that?
Any other question?
Yeah, I guess, so the dollar amount listed in here is $90,000. Is that the full grant, or is that like Fitchburg's share of the grant?
That is what is available for this project, and so that would be factored in when we're dealing with the contract, is a number, is really the number of hours available from the analyst.
Sorry, and what was the answer of who worked on this?
It's a team effort. Again, we've, we've had a number of people involved in this, but it's through the partnership, really, that we've had with the state and a lot of other law enforcement agencies that has gotten us to this point.
Thank you.
Chief Morales, do you want to add anything else to this conversation?
No, I was just here to ask, answer any questions that, if Ned could not answer. However, that, the grant amount also covers administrative fees usually applied by finance.
Okay. Okay, so any other comments, question? Okay, so we need to do roll call, please. Two thirds.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen. Hi. I was waiting for my name to be called. Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Jetser?
Aye.
Alder Molinato?
Aye.
Alder Vafadari?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Michael. Thank you, Chief. Okay, so next we move to Alder District Report, and we will start with four.
Nothing, nothing crazy out of the ordinary to report. I just want to reiterate and give a shout out and thank you to staff for responding to a slew of ambiguous and numerous executive orders that we don't actually know what they mean or if they're legal. So just want to give a huge shout out to city staff, because I think normal citizens have been overwhelmed by it, and I can't imagine how city and local staff feel about it. So thank you for all of the extra work and mental load being put into being as thoughtful as we can.
I have nothing.
Okay, Jay?
Not a lot going on in District Three right now.
No?
No, it's been quiet.
Two?
Nothing for me.
Bill?
Oh, just want to say that when the weather cooperates, which it is currently not, the skating rink over in McKee Farms Park has some pretty darn good quality ice.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I've been out on the ice. I didn't actually put skates on or anything, but.
[laughing].
We haven't had a lot of.
So how do you know that we have pretty good ice?
Well, what I mean is, it's a nice, smooth surface, and we haven't had any snow to, you know, to cause any problems.
I have some skate. My last time that I did that was 20 years ago. 20 years ago, no.
The only other thing I wanted to share is that on Sunday, I participated in a community book club event held at Machinery Robicicles. We discussed the book Killed by a Traffic Engineer. It's, it's about the science and/or pseudoscience that's been applied to the, you know, design of our roads and, and our, our built infrastructure over the last 100 years or so. We were lucky enough to have Yang Tao, Madison's Director of Traffic Engineering. And so he shared a lot of his thoughts and was, and did not take the title of the book personally.
Okay, thank you. District One, Joe?
There was a Food is Medicine event at Allied last Saturday, and it was a beautiful event. There were, I'll say close to 100 people there. And it started out with an educational event on the origins of different foods, and then it was opened up to the public as a pod. Like, I've, I've been to a lot of the community dinners in Allied, and this one was probably